Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled, called and convened meeting of the Greer City Council. We have gathered this evening, November the fourteenth, 2023, and having announced that we have formally convened for this meeting, I would like to ask Councilman Corium Booker, if you would, please to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation for council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for tonight to be able to convene as a council body, Father, to conduct the business of the city of Greer, Father. Lord, we ask you just to be amongst us as we do your business tonight. Let us do what's fair and equitable for all, but also keep in mind everyone that may be out there that is in situations that may not be in the best, such as homelessness and all the ones that we are entailed to. Father, let's not forget our brothers and sisters over in the Middle East. Father, Lord, we ask you just to continue to wrap your arms of protection around the country of Israel, Father, and we ask for peace amongst the brethren. And it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
We thank you for joining us this evening. If you had an opportunity to see the agenda, it is a bit lengthier than we have been accustomed to as of late, but we are going to get started here on time and move as expeditiously as we can towards wrapping this up, but maybe a little later this evening than we have been recently. We do have some people to appear in public forum this evening. Public forum is a time that we set aside for those individuals who wish to speak to something that is on the agenda this evening. We've got three people that have indicated that they want to speak this evening, and since it's just three, we typically would ask that you keep those comments to around three minutes, since we've got a fairly small number and a couple of issues to address. It looks like most everybody wants to speak to the UDO. I will exercise some discretion this evening and ask that you simply be mindful of the others, and I will entertain, say, five minutes for each speaker, so we'll move along in that regard. With that, our first speaker this evening is Betsy Potter. If you would, if you will come to the podium, if you will give us your name and address simply for the record, then the floor is yours.
Hello. My name is Betsy Potter, and I live at 116 West Church Street. I'm a member of the Board of Architectural Review, and I'm also co-owner of three buildings and a business in the proposed historic district overlay. I'd like to congratulate you on nearing the completion of the UDO. It will provide a much-needed framework for the exponential growth that our city is experiencing. As a member of the bar, my concern about the UDO is that it encourages density, particularly close to downtown, while drastically reducing the area offered historic protection from the entire downtown area to a small section of commercial buildings on trade and point set streets. This will put unprecedented development pressure on our unprotected historic structures. We can do better. With the coming growth, it becomes all the more important to protect the character that makes Greer special and unique, the things that brought us here and remind us of our heritage. As it states in the Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, "As officials of the city, we are supposed to protect, preserve, and enhance the distinctive architectural and cultural heritage of the city." The UDO does not do this. In 2017, a historic resources survey, this giant document, that was commissioned and paid for by the city of Greer, recommended 13 architecturally historic resources for listing in the National Register of Historic Places in addition to those already listed. The recommendation includes 11 buildings and two districts, the Arlington-Davenport-Mountainview Neighborhood, which is the one behind Memorial United Methodist Church, and the Greer Millan Village, because they both retain a relatively high level of architectural integrity compared to other neighborhoods in Greer. This means that they are not historic due to association with a person or event, but that the style of architecture itself is of historical importance. Other neighborhoods did not qualify because too much of their historic architecture has already been removed. My fellow Board of Architectural Review members and I propose historic district overlays for these neighborhoods, as well as protection for eligible individual properties. Greenville has seven designated historic neighborhoods. We can have two. The Arlington-Davenport-Mountainview Neighborhood is already succumbing to development pressure due to its newfound desirability. If we do not protect our historic structures now, they may not exist in the future or may be so altered that they are no longer representative of our history. National Register designation is mostly honorary, but it would make these buildings eligible for federal and state tax incentives, which can promote rehabilitation and boost the economy as well as tourism. However, it does not provide any protection for these valuable resources. Protection of historic and architecturally valuable neighborhoods can only be provided by a historic district overlay, which only city council can approve. Our future generations are depending on you to preserve our heritage now. A preservation ordinance does not prevent change. It encourages appropriate alterations and new construction that fits in with existing buildings. With a local historic district, you can be reassured that a new property owner across the street will help maintain the historic character of the district. Without a local ordinance, public outcry may stop some inappropriate development, which has happened a few times in recent years, but these struggles are costly in terms of time and money for developers and the community. A historic zoning overlay sets up a predictable framework in which decisions about community appearance and historic properties can be made. Historic districts have a bad reputation, mostly due to misconceptions about how they will affect property owners. There's no need for our ordinance to be as strict as Charleston or Savannah. Paint color need not even be considered. Most building changes could be approved by staff rather than the bar. The level of preservation is completely at our discretion with input from property owners. A smart city desires balanced growth. One aspect that must be balanced is the fate of our historic structures. Now is the time to act, and the UDO gives us the opportunity to do so. Please support the bar and help make our historic neighborhoods a point of pride for the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have some handouts, if I may.
If you will give them there to Ms. Duncan, that would be great. She will make sure that everybody gets one. And I'm sorry if I missaid your last name. It is indeed Betsy Potter. I may have said Porter because she lives about a block down from you, and so. With that, then, our next speaker this evening is Sherri Barrett, and she is with Upstate Forever, and the floor is yours, please.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Sherri Barrett. I'm with Upstate Forever, 507 Pettigrew Street in Greenville. I had the pleasure of serving on the Stakeholder Committee throughout this UDO development process that covered several years and was really focused on housing opportunities throughout that process, as well as open space, trees, landscaping, that kind of thing is of particular interest to us, but housing is an area that Upstate Forever has addressed in a number of codes that we have followed over the last few years as cities grapple with housing prices, making cities affordable to live in as land values increase with great public city growth and public investments that have, Greer has really done an outstanding job with, I have to say, that makes city living very attractive. The draft code has some provisions for missing middle housing types, which are affordable just by their mere definition, and that is multiple house-scale buildings with multiple units in walkable places. So these are homes that fit nicely into walkable neighborhoods. The idea is that not everyone living in the house-scale building with multiple units will need a car for every driver, every potential driver in that home, and so the walkable places part of the definition is key to appropriately locating and zoning for missing middle housing types. So that's, I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about missing middle housing types and that we do support the code. They have been embraced, I would say, at a pretty minimal level, but hopefully as the city grows and becomes, has even more walkable neighborhoods, there'll be more opportunities for this type of housing. I'd also like to compliment the work on the draft code and the work that you all have done around accessory dwelling units and making that a housing option as well. Thank you very much for your time and for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker this evening is Craig, and I've got Burgsum, Burgum, Craig? No comment? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. With that, then, we will move to minutes of the council meeting. You have in your packet this evening the minutes from our October the 24th, 2023 meeting. I'll entertain a motion that they be received this evening.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the administrators' report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, good evening. First of all, I wanted to say to this council and, of course, to our community at large, we just celebrated Veterans Day here in Greer, so from the administrator and administrative staff to all of our employees who are veterans, have served or are serving in one way, shape, or form, I do want to thank you for your service, past and present, so I didn't want to let that go without recognition. As far as administrators' report goes, Loose Leaf Collection began on November 6th, so if you're living in Greer, you should have received a pamphlet in the mail explaining when your areas will be picked up, but you can also check that map on the City of Greer's website. It is that time of year for Cops for Tots, and the Greer Police Department is already collecting new toys for Cops for Tots. This is the 20th Annual Sosil Toy Drive, or, excuse me, the 20th Annual Sosil Toy Drive was held this past Saturday. November 12th was also benefited Cops for Tots, but if you're looking for ways to donate, please reach out to the Greer Police Department. Our Christmas tree lighting will be on December 1st from 5:00 to 8:00, so there will be live music, food, and holiday crafts, and then, of course, it concludes with St. Nick and Mayor Danner lighting the Christmas tree at the top of the park at the end of the promenade. The Farmer's Market, the Christmas Farmer's Market Festival, will be on December 2nd through the 3rd between 2:00 and 4:00. And then finally, the Greer Christmas Parade is December 3rd from 2:00 to 4:00. The route is about 1.1 miles long, and it begins at Point Set and Memorial Drive and ends at North Main and Cunningham, so get there early to claim a spot along the route to see what is becoming one of the best Christmas parades in the upstate. I also want to bring to council's attention, staff has been working on three different ordinances that we're going to be bringing in the next few meetings to council for your consideration, and I just want to kind of gloss over the three that we are bringing to you. The first is a peddler's ordinance. This is, we have an existing ordinance that is on, in our code now, but this will be, will have an expanded definition section, which will include solicitor, canvasser, and peddler. It will expand and define requirements for the issuance of a business license, and then it will expand the rules and regulations of operation, most notably providing wearing identification, limiting hours, and enforcement of no soliciting notifications. So we are, that, of course, is not the ordinance in its entirety, but I did want you to be aware of what we were bringing to you and why. The second one is a short-term rentals ordinance. This is something that has become more and more, something that needs to be addressed in the city, and you're seeing more and more of these ordinances throughout the state. This is a creation of a new ordinance, which will establish written regulations in the Business License Code where none currently exist. It will be the requirement of a license and the collection and remittance of the appropriate taxes, and will address the availability of the owner or agent, signage, parking, garbage collection, and minimal life safety equipment and contacts. I want to be very clear that this is not a restriction in any way, shape, or form, but it simply provides us an opportunity to track those and ensure that the appropriate life safety equipment can be inspected for those short-term rentals, but that is the second of three that we intend to bring to you in the next few weeks. The final is containing, concerning mobile food units. This is the creation of a new ordinance establishing written regulations in the Business License Code where none currently exist regulating mobile food units. It will require licensing and collection of the appropriate business license taxes, operational hours, et cetera, et cetera, handling of garbage, waste. So that will, that will be the third of three that we intend to bring to council over the next few meetings. The reason I wanted to bring these up, and we did not go ahead and put these on the agenda, is to kind of get your mind wrapped around those particular things and let you know the staff is available to discuss these in, in some detail over the next few weeks. Unless there's any questions specific to the report or these three ordinances that I touched on, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Administrators are available if you have questions in regards to his report or other items as well, too. With that, then, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. This evening, we have two in regards to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. David Seifert joins us for that conversation and will give us some information in regards to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Appears that we have two terms that will expire on 12/31/2023. Mr. Seifert, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. We've been in contact with both of these individuals. The first one, Mr. Vogon, is requesting to step off when his term expires, so we are presently speaking with a, an individual that is interested, and we haven't gotten a final answer yet from him to fill that spot. The second one is Ms. Joener, and she is interested in serving again and has requested reappointment.
Thank you, sir. As a matter of action, the, the second position, Ms. Katie Joener, who represents the cultural organization representative, has agreed to serve another term and comes with a recommendation from the committee. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or regards to her service? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, in regards to the Recreation Association Board of Trustees, we, we have several openings or at least terms that are expiring. Please take note of those. I know that Ms. Cunningham intended to join us, but I don't believe she's been able to this evening, so we're going to hold this over until our next meeting. In District 1, Lance Owens' term expires on 12/31/2023. In District 3, Amanda Hopper's term expires 12/31/2023. In District 5, Melissa Pageant Smith's term expires 12/31/2023. And then at-large, Mark Medcalf's term expires 12/31/2023. With the exception of the at-large appointment, Mr. Medcalf, who has already served three terms, he is no longer eligible for reappointment, so Districts 1, 3, and 5. If you want to speak with your representative, we will have this agenda item on our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Lance Owens, he's done a fine job for us. He's, is serving on the Board of Trustees. He's also a really good, he's a really good man, and he has a really good family, but he has indicated he really would like to serve again, so I'll place that in as a motion.
Comes as a nomination, though. Hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion in regards to a reappointment for Lance Owens to serve District 1 on the Recreation Association Board of Trustees? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. District 3 or District 5, any information tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've talked to my appointee, and she is willing to continue service. She's done so since well before I came on council. I received a call from staff this afternoon enthusiastically lobbying for her continued service as well, and so I would like to nominate Amanda Hopper to serve another term representing District 3.
That comes with a recommendation. A pretty hearty one, isn't it, I assume? Do I hear a second? Requires action. Any questions, comments, or observations for Mr. Hopper? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
District 5?
District 5 has not contacted Ms. Smith yet.
Okay. Thank you, sir. With that, then, let's move to items of new business, counsel. Our first item this evening is ordinance number 28-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Greer Christian Learning Center Incorporated located at 3055 East Gap Creek Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R15 for said property. Ms. Byers joins us this evening in regards to ordinance number 28-2023. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Ordinance 28-2023 is an annexation request for one parcel at East Gap Creek Road. The existing Christian Learning Center will remain. An aerial image of the subject parcel. Current zoning map. The green is RS Residential Suburban and is the location of Greer Middle and High School. The yellow is DRD Design Review District, and the parcels without an overlay are within Greenville County jurisdiction. Future land use map shows suburban neighborhood in light yellow. The parcels that do not have the overlay but are in the city is due to a mapping error. The existing site. And again, the request is to annex and zone to R15 residential. Surrounding land uses are residential and civic. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on recommended zoning for the property on November 20th, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representatives of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you. Are you available for questions if they come up during discussion? Thank you. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Comes with a recommendation of approval from staff?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments?
So annexation just makes it possible to do the expansion? What's the request for annexation for, I guess, my question?
Or the applicant speak?
If you'll, if you'll come to the podium, please, it'll be beneficial. That way you can use the speaker, and we'll have it as a matter of record as well, too.
Thank you. We feel like we're a part of Greer. We're the only ones that does our release time ministry in Greer. There is another ministry that does it in Greenville. Feel like we'd get better services, and we also feel like our expansion experience would be a better experience in Greer.
Thank you.
Hey, Pierce. Pierce's parents used to live in my old house. We, so we live in the Williams house now, and I think your mom helped us start the Greer Christian Learning Center, is that right? And your dad?
She had retired by then. My dad built the amphitheater in her honor when she passed away, so she was a longtime middle school teacher.
We're glad to see that you're expanding. Appreciate all the, all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you. Second, second item before us is the first reading of ordinance number 29-2023. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by 1372-1 East Wade Hampton Boulevard LLC located at 13721 East Wade Hampton Boulevard by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of C3, which is highway commercial for said property. Ms. Byers?
Ordinance 29-2023 is an annexation request for one parcel of East Wade Hampton Boulevard. The existing D&amp;D customization shop will remain in its current configuration. Here is an aerial image of the subject parcel. Current zoning map. The adjacent zoning in pink is C3 Highway Commercial. The light yellow south of that is R12 Single Family, and the darker yellow further south of the subject parcel is R7.5 Single Family. Parcells without an overlay are located within Spartanburg County jurisdiction. Future land use map shows suburban commercial in pink, and the thick red line along Wade Hampton Boulevard represents a suburban commercial corridor. Here is the existing site, which again will remain in its current configuration. That can, oh, sorry. Again, the request is to annex and zone to C3 Highway Commercial. Surrounding land uses are primarily commercial. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on recommended zoning for the property November 20th, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Are you available for questions? Thank you. With that, then, with the recommendation of staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
And what's the reason, the purpose for this annexation, since it's going to remain?
Let the applicant speak.
Thank you, sir.
So the purpose of this annexation is because our other businesses are already in Greer City, as well as we just want everything to be all one unit. We already have our sprinkler systems and everything like that. Greer City comes out and does all the inspections for all of our buildings, so we'd like to stay with Greer City.
Thank you, sir. Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number thirty dash twenty-two-three. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and project line-out with respect to certain reimbursements to be made for certain investments made inside the city. Authorizing the execution and delivery of additional documents and taking additional actions and providing for other related matters. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, I would request the council, uh, hold this over until after executive session.
Counsel, at the request of the administrator, we will hold the first reading of ordinance number thirty dash twenty-two-three over uh, for consideration later in the meeting, um, following executive session. Item four is the first reading of ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty-two-three. This is an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the City of Greer to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of twenty twenty. Mr. Seifert joins us for this conversation. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This ordinance comes to us by way of the Municipal Association to keep us compliant with state law as is stated there from Act one seventy-six from the year twenty twenty. Just offering a pre, brief overview of the ordinance. Section one A is a renumbering of those uh, classes that are in, or excuse me, those businesses that are in Class eight point three telephone companies. Uh, section one B is remaining the same, is just clarifying the, and cleaning up the language to make it a little easier to understand. That relates to um, pool tables and billiard halls. Section one C, in uh, in this ordinance, um, peddlers were in a Class nine. They were being eliminated from Class nine and then they're being moved up into their natural class, which is classes one through seven. So that's what one C does, is move them to their natural class. In section two, we have section two A. This is uh, the section where, uh, again, under state law, every two years, we have to do analysis and resort where businesses fall within the natural classes of one through seven. And that is based on the IRS statistics of that section. Resort the businesses. Uh, section two B stays the same for us. And then two C is a, uh, again, a reiteration of the peddlers moving to a natural class. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. This requires action, comes with recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
A motion.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for questions.
David, do we have a lot of peddlers currently paying business license tax?
It varies. It depends on uh, what's going on in, in the neighborhood or in the city. Uh, more in particular in relation to uh, schools and book sales. Uh, not local schools, but bigger schools. Um, and sometimes we'll have one or two a year, other times we'll have about fifty-five. It just depends on when they come into the city and they're doing their subscription sales.
Would this apply to um, the vendors that you see during parades that sell in the stuff?
It depends on, uh, we handle the vendors in, that are part of events separately. So if they fall under the um, the organizer of the event, that's included in the special event license. But if they are in the city multiple times all throughout the year, such as the gentleman that has the um, the concession stands up on the corner, um, he's here multiple times and he will get a regular license.
Others? Comments? Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, items five and six this evening are the first reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-two-three and also the first reading of ordinance number thirty-two dash twenty uh, twenty-three. These both are in regards to our current zoning ordinances and also to a proposed new zoning map and Unified Development Ordinance. We will entertain those separately and our planning um, staff joins that. Ms. Ashley Cotty will lead this discussion. We have the first reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty-two-three. This is an ordinance to repeal the City of Greer zoning ordinance identified as Appendix A zoning of the City of Greer Code of Ordinances and to the City of Greer Land Development Regulations and to replace the zoning ordinance and land development regulations with the City of Greer Unified Development Ordinance. Ms. Cotty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Um, just to tee up this conversation, um, this project has been going on and off for the last two years. We appreciate stakeholder feedback along the way, as well as um, from our boards, including this council with the various work sessions that you've had, the one-on-ones that you've had with us and our consultant, Kim Lee Horn. And we look forward to working with council to um, try and get consensus for some changes that you'd like to see for second reading. Um, and hopefully get this new code into place before the end of the year so we can start um, using these for new projects. So with that, I will turn this over to our consultant, the project manager from Kim Lee Horn is Mr. Kelly Klepper. You guys have met him several times before. Um, he's going to give a very quick overview, since we have done several sessions. Um, and we have a lengthy agenda. We won't go into too much detail, but we are certainly um, looking forward to conversation afterward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn. And I would be remiss if I did not introduce Ms. Monae Moore, uh, who has been an integral member of our team. She's been on a number of the meetings, the calls, conferences, things of that nature. Uh, without her with this project, I don't think we'd be where it is personally. Uh, but that also goes along the same lines as Ashley, Claire and Heather. Uh, you've got an incredible staff and with them, we've been able to move this thing, this project forward. Uh, yes, we've been at this for a little bit of time, but we wanted to try to get it as close to right and perfect as we could with a number of items, uh, including a significant amount of community outreach and input. Uh, so just to kind of go through a couple of things, um, as Ashley said, we're going to keep this brief. Uh, three hundred and sixteen pages, I know that's some very light reading for some of you, but at the same time, uh, we have been to this for some period of time. The UDO is just that, it's a Unified Development Ordinance. We're here tonight asking, as Ashley said, for your positive recommendation towards the, getting some, uh, some, some agreements, some updates on components within this document as we move forward with second reading and ultimate adoption. We did listen, we did take a look at not only your conference of plan, we looked at best planning practices. We looked at a number of things. We simplified the code, we removed restrictions, we added uh, design standards, we added illustrations, we added a number of things. And at the end of the day, we did create a brand-new Unified Development Ordinance that actually flows a lot more freely, I'll say, from a, just a readability and usability. Uh, previous UDO and code was kind of scattered. Staff also admitted that at the same time, it's like, we need help getting this fixed. So what we did is, is a team, a combined team was to, there again, create a, a better, easier, uh, more, I'll say, clear document moving forward. Uh, all of the sections that you see here are represented within those three hundred and sixteen pages. There again, I'm not going to go into each of these, other than to say that there are specific sections dedicated to individual topics, uh, including some of the update and the modernization of your zoning codes. Uh, the update of the zoning map, which I know is a separate component of all of this. The overlays and design standards, this is one of the things that we had quite a bit of discussion on, including uh, input from the BAR. Keeping in mind that the area that we've identified for the historic overlay and some of those areas are those i- i- items that have been adopted by this council and have been under the premise of the BAR for some period of time. We did not expand or contract, we did not modify their regulations. We didn't think that we were the appropriate ones to do that. Uh, there are some additional protection measures that are input within each of these overlays. And there's also been a consolidation and simplification so that the overlays that you see, especially the orange kind of fingers, are more uniform in nature so that there again is a consistent approach to codes and, and the development itself. That just gives you a quick snapshot of the specific overlays. The small kind of uh, bluish is the historic district. The transitional kind of follows the, kind of the, the surrounding neighborhood and the downtown areas. That's the one in red. And then the various entryways coming into the city, so making sure we protect those as we're moving forward. The uses and the standards, there again, looking at modernizations and con- uh, condensing those down. Also providing a number of design standards and graphics so that each of the topics is clearly illustrated so that the reader and the user knows exactly what the staff is looking at. And also providing building and site design standards. Uh, so making sure there again, Greer has a positive image. We want to make sure we're protecting and enhancing that. A little bit more of the mundane, the subdivision regulations, so the engineering standards that are applicable within this. And that also includes a number of things, including cluster subdivisions. And then, uh, last but not least, definitions. So where are we in the process? We've had a number of stakeholder interviews, the kickoff, we've had updates with this group. Uh, we've had the Planning Commission workshops, we've had uh, five public meetings. We had over a hundred individuals that attended a, a series of two days of, two days worth of events, both here and over at the Cannon Center. Had some extremely great feedback and I, I would be remiss also if I didn't say that I missed Ms. Lois again tonight. Um, if those of you who do not know Ms. Lois, the ninety-one-year-old, uh, I'll say spark plug in this community, still lives on her own, still property owner. I talked to her for over thirty minutes and she had some of, some of the most incredible comments itself. Uh, so hats off to somebody like Ms. Lois. Information's always been out there. We've been utilizing the city's website for project updates. And then more importantly, what we did, and, and this is in conjunction with staff, what we heard. So comments either brought by this body or those that have provided comments to the stakeholders or the community workshops and the resolution of those comments so people could see, yes, no, maybe so, or well, maybe not. Uh, so that there was some sort of disposition throughout those. There were comments with respect to certain densities and lot sizes. Those have been updated and addressed. There were items with consideration regarding signage, some design standards and some of those things also were addressed within this document. Planning Commission did have a number of topics that we talked about, whether it was from the overlays, the parking standards, building heights, buffers, et cetera. And there was a unanimous recommendation from that group, uh, supporting the approval of the UDO. Uh, and with that, Mayor and Council will be happy to answer any questions and would definitely welcome those tonight.
Thank you. If you'll just be available for uh, questions at um, at this point in time, then uh, we will um, we will proceed in that regard. In regards to um, ordinance, uh, thirty-one twenty-two-three, I'll entertain a, a motion that it be received for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I will, um, let me start us off. I, I appreciate everyone who has put their, their time and their effort into it, whether it's people who've come for the public meetings, whether it's our staff or consultants. At this point, um, I, I'm not happy with the, what we have. When we started, it was told to us, this council, this body, that it would um, update needed development regulations, things that were antiquated, things like that. Uh, and it would make it simpler and easier. It would give staff more leeway uh, to making decisions when it came to development. I, I found only one of those to be correct and that we updated some things that were antiquated. From the very beginning, uh, and, and it was mentioned tonight that, that it's a long document and it is, and it's, it's, um, it is not exciting reading. But I, I did go through every page and just do, in a quick review in the beginning. And then I've reviewed it and talked with staff several times. And I'm not even sure some of the questions have been answered, but that, that I asked about or if, if it's been changed in the ordinance, but uh, an example, um, that every year, Planning Commission makes the decision on who keeps the minutes of the meeting. It could be a secretary that they appoint or it could be staff. And when you talk with staff and others, they say, well, that shouldn't have been in there. That's, that's one example. And there's a lot of things that, that probably shouldn't be in there, but it was kind, it seemed like it was a copy and paste. Um, one of the questions I did have was about, about a definition, uh, defining preservation versus conservation when it comes to, I, I think it's lands, trees. But the response back was all the other municipalities are, are using preservation. I don't care what other municipalities are doing. I believe that, that this is for Greer and it's not for anybody else. Um, a- a- and, and that was, I think that was just left. It may, I don't know if it's been, I don't, I do not believe that that definition has been changed. We had someone speak tonight about historic preservation. And they talked about downtown, which that is all, in, in the very beginning, I was told that, that the historic preservation information or regulations came from the state. And it was almost like a copy and paste. And as I thought about that, my, my question in my mind is, well, what, what are we trying to do when we are trying to uh, keep a certain look? And is what we have what we want? And the example would be, when you drive down Point Set and you're by the um, going by the side entrance, what used to be side entrance of the old BA Bennett Building directly across from your place. And you can tell that there has been a door taken out and the wall has been bricked up. And when I first saw it, I thought, my gosh, who laid these brick? Because you can see exactly where this door was. It's a different colored brick. And what I've been told is that state regulations require that. So you can see that there was a door there and it has been filled up instead of making it look like the old building. I, I don't know if that's what we're trying to accomplish. I don't know if, i- if we want things to look, we do define dates of what we want things to look like. But then we take out things that may be personal preference or we just don't think it looks good. But we define dates of, for our downtown, that what happened between nineteen oh five and maybe nineteen twenty. There's a lot of building styles that were present then that aren't now. But we don't, we don't allow those. Building heights, and we've had a lot of discussion about that. And let's just continue to use downtown. The way I see these, the, the, this, this being written is that everything is all the same. In, in economics, they call that all, all else remain constant. That's fine if we're all on flat ground. And we, we say a building can only be, take a number sixty feet tall. But if the area you're saying where a building can only be sixty feet tall, if you start at point A and you go down to point B and the difference in elevation is twenty-five feet. And some of the things you're trying to stop is being able to see rooftops from other taller buildings. It can't be done. We talk about screening on rooftops and then we also go back and say, We talk about screening on rooftops, and then we also go back and say, if there's any other plumbing pipes, gas, anything that's penetrating the roof, it has to be painted to match. Well, why? If you, if you got screening up there, why? I'm not saying that this is not needed. I'm just saying that we need, I was having a, a meeting with our building official where we were talking about roof heights. And in the document, it gives, this is how tall a roof can be, and then we will give staff leeway of, say, 10%. But that's the easy way out. Why, why is there not a formula in here that says, this is how, if you're located somewhere in this particular area, we know, we, we, we want to maintain scale, but just to say it can only be this high and adding 10%, that's, that's not what we paid for. And I, I think those have to be addressed. And, and there's a lot of, lot of things that, that, I guess is, I've gone back and I've looked at my questions and comments over time. It's not so much that I think that what, that I disagree with a certain look or building materials or so on or so forth. It's just that, even the name Unified Development, well Unified, if you go back and look at the fire service and the police service on big scenes, that's what they use now as a unified command. So it's just, they just rebranding. And so now, i- if we have this Unified Development Organization, or Ordinance, and somebody wants to build a building that's 85 feet tall, and our regulation says 65. And so there, that, that builder, that developer now has to go and go before the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, sir.
But it's the same now. So what's changed? What are we doing that's different, that's making it easier, that, that gives staff more leeway? I, I just think there's more things to be done. At this point, I'm not happy with the document. I know that, that, that our, our second reading, we, we, I will propose some amendments to it. But that's where I stand with it right now.
Thank you, sir. If, if, if I might, obviously, we have all given this a great deal of thought over a fairly long period of time, as we have dealt with it for, as was mentioned earlier tonight, nearly two years at this point. And indeed, it is a, it is a long document, but we, we deal in a lot of, a lot of documentation in, in just by its very nature of, of what we do. And quite honestly, this, you know, this only comes before us every couple of decades, so it's, it shouldn't be too overwhelming to us in that regard. I have, like Mr. Airwood, obviously spent a great deal of time thinking about this transition. And while, like him, I had a number of questions at, at some point in time, I know we spent at least three hours, over two sessions, going through that. And so I have, for this evening's discussion, written down some of my thoughts in regards to where we are. And as you will, as you will hear, is I asked counsel to indulge me for a minute as I put on both my citizen's hat and my council hat at the same time, find that, that I think what we've got is a, a very workable document and one that while there may be places in there that I am not perfectly clear on and/or understand to some degree, or, or even agree with. It's a, it's a living document. And so if you will indulge me, as I have asked, I, I am going to read some comments, which I don't often do, but to make sure that I hit everything that I had thought about in recently, that, that this would be a more concise way of, of doing it. Every structure that is built, every street that is paved, every tree that is planted in every public space that is shaped contributes to the legacy we leave to those who will live in or visit our community after us. We all want to hand down strong, healthy, beautiful places where neighbors know one another, job opportunities are abundant, and people of all races, incomes, backgrounds are welcome. But how do we achieve this? Imagine how confusing and inefficient it would be if we didn't plan for the journey. We'd start and stop. We would change directions. We would backtrack, all while trying to figure out if we were on the right track or if we needed to find a new way. It would be just as difficult and ineffective for us to plan for our community based solely on what we can see coming in the next five years. Our current planning and zoning ordinance has served us well for the past 24 years, and so it is my hope that the proposed U D O will serve us for the next 25 years and beyond into the future, helping our community articulate the legacy it wants, sets goals to achieve it, and creates benchmarks that we can check our progress and make necessary changes along the way. All new development brings change. It can mean new economic opportunities, changes in traffic, more houses, and possibly even the loss of farmland. Property owners, neighbors, renters, developers, businesses, schools, governments, and taxpayers all feel the effects, and they all have rights and responsibilities that must be balanced. Developers expect a timely and predictable approval process. Citizens expect that new development will not harm them and will be consistent with the community's vision. All groups should work constructively with the city and each other on development projects. Local officials should establish development policies and priorities that use tax dollars wisely, protect the public health and welfare, and balance the need of both citizens and developers, include input from the citizens in the decision-making process and plan for the long term. Development touches every part of our lives, so we should all be part of getting the development we want. Sometimes people worry that development might degrade the quality of life in their community, but it does not have to be that way. What if rather than more traffic, new development near you meant new sidewalks and possibly cycling options? What if rather than high taxes, development meant new friends for your children and more recreational programming? What if rather than more pollution, development meant a new neighborhood park? In short, what if new development created great new places that made our town and others even better to live in? Well, it can be done. Communities around the nation, including Greer, are developing in ways that offer more choices to protect natural resources, honor their culture and heritage, use resources wisely, and improve the local economy. We are building safe, affordable housing to meet community needs and making it easier to get around, protecting health, and creating new jobs. This new U D O and its accompanying growth strategies are going to help us create a better future and fulfill residents' desire to live in a place like Greer. When the City of Greer's current planning and zoning ordinance was drafted and passed in 1999, Greer was quite a different place than it is today. Over the past two decades plus, Greer has grown over 1,000 new residents a year to its current population, well in excess of 40,000 residents. Greer offers a broad range of housing from suburban neighborhoods to bustling urban multifamily. The city offers a wide variety of resources and serves as a regional employment hub. There is truly something for everyone in Greer, and is important, important that the city's development regulations are up to date to preserve its character, neighborhood, natural resources, and provide a variety of housing options, as well as encourage economic development where infrastructure is already in place for businesses to thrive. Our current development standards have been changed and amended numerous times over the years to address concerns. However, after several decades, it is time to take a more comprehensive look at our regulations. There are a broad range of uses and technologies today that were not even contemplated previously, such as short-term rentals, accessory dwelling units, food truck parks, tiny homes, active living communities, townhomes, co-work spaces, and e-fulfillment centers, and online retailers, just to name a few. Similarly, the way we shop, where we work, and how we do business is changing. With more people shopping online, it is now appropriate to look at parking requirements and infrastructure needs. It may also be crucial to look at our commercial corridors throughout the city to make sure that we have the right tools in place to allow for appropriate reuse or development opportunities of underutilized or potentially blighted properties to become an asset to the surrounding area. With so much to consider, it is imperative to have dedicated resources with the right expertise to ensure that the new U D O will be adequate to shape development in the City of Greer for the next several decades. A U D O, a Unified Development Ordinance, is a local policy investment, instrument that combines traditional zoning and subdivision regulations along with other city-desired regulations such as desired guidelines, sign regulations, and stormwater management, all into one document. By combining these regulations into this single document, a U D O is intended to streamline and coordinate the development process of permits and approvals for development projects by removing inconsistencies and eliminating outdated policies. The required permits, processes, and regulations for the development process are all outlined in one place, making it easier for the public, developers, and public entities to understand the requirements. Along with compiling the regulations and policies, our U D O can use clear and consistent language and definitions with illustrations and tables, often in an easier-to-read format to help the stakeholders understand the regulations. U D Os are, can be beneficial to communities looking for more comprehensive approach to the land use regulations and economic development. A U D O for us is a helpful tool in accommodating neo-traditional as well as mixed-use development and providing a thorough and comprehensive approach to meeting goals such as environmental protection, transit opportunities, and mixed-use housing. They are perhaps most useful for cities experiencing rapid growth like Greer, where streamlining of varied, complex development or enhanced control over economic development is desired. Because of the consolidated and streamlined requirements, U D Os afford stockholders in the process more predictability with respect to the standards for development and permit approval, and can allow for the reduction in process costs because of its increased efficiency. The U D O ordinance is not intended as a wholesale rewrite of the city's zoning and development regulations, nor is it an effort to rezone large portions of the city. The intent of our U D O is to examine the city's current planning and zoning ordinances and reflect new uses, new trends, principles, and technology that might not have even been in use when the current code was written, as well as pare down uses in zoning districts that are no longer applicable or even utilized. It is also an examination of requirements such as parking standards, landscape standards, infrastructure standards, and others. It is a living document, and regulations can be changed and updating as, updated as approved, as appropriate. As you can see, I feel like there are several reasons we should move forward and embrace a new U D O. As I stated earlier, all development brings change. And the new U D O reflects the modern way development occurs. Combining all of the regulations together in one document helps ensure that the regulations thoroughly implement the comprehensive plan, giving the code a forum where it can be reviewed and even amended in a broader public setting. This integrated process gives our citizens, staff, boards, and elected officials a clearer picture of what's being proposed. While I am not so naive as to think that everyone will agree with everything in the new U D O, or even agree that we need a new one, I think it is fair to say at a minimum, the city has engaged the citizens, developers, city staff, and elected officials in the process of making decisions that created this document in good faith. I hope you will join me in supporting the 2023 U D O for the City of Greer. Thank you, counsel. I know that was a bit long, but my thoughts. Others?
I have a question related to the speaker that was here this evening regarding the study that she had done with the other historical, I always get a little mixed up when I'm saying that word, historical neighborhoods, to be in there. And also going back and reading, I read here where one lady, apparently she lived in the Davenport, was a little bit upset about their neighborhood being, you know, termed suburban instead of, you know, they felt like, and I guess a lot of people buy into the fact that I live in the downtown neighborhood. And so I, I think, you know, when you look at the zoning map and it says suburban neighborhood, I mean, you know, could that not be related some way to the downtown neighborhood? Or, you know, what is close to proximity to downtown instead of suburban?
Certainly, I think that's something that we can discuss, and we have, we have talked about that in some regard. It's, it's nomenclature, and if it is the desire of this council to change it, we can consider that as amendment, an amendment, as we, as we get to that point where we, we might want to do that.
And, and as far as the U D O, does that block out the possibility of bringing in the additional two historical areas? Or is this set in stone till whenever?
No, that, that would not. It, it, the designation of those areas and the implications that would go with that would be determined by this council, if we want to, if we want to do that.
There's a process in place. It would be a zoning map amendment. This board saw a similar request earlier this year from Greer Mill to adopt that parcel at 300 Connecticut as local historic district, so subject to the downtown overlay. Staff did bring an expanded overlay to the February work session with council, and there did not seem to be consensus about expanding it. And so that is why in this final version, it is not in the plans. But absolutely, it is, it is possible for consideration. It would just be a zoning map amendment, go to the Board of Arc or Textural Review, go to the public hearing with Planning Commission, and then finally to this board for, for approval. Yes, ma'am.
You know, like was pointed out, I think sometimes we want to remember Greer and where Greer was, and kind of where it started, I guess. And those would be areas that were the first phases of Greer. Is that true? I mean, you know, the ones closer to proximity downtown, like where the development began and.
Well, there, it, it depends. There are areas certainly in Greer that are older. You know, we, it, it is a designation that comes from, as you heard from one of our speaker, and speakers this evening, that comes from typically either a study or either from an effort led by the citizens that want to create these areas and/or a, a city that does, based on a number of factors. So it may be something that this council wants to talk about at some point in time and, and learn more about.
So it could be implemented?
Sure, absolutely. It can be, it could be added to this. One thing I might want to, I will, I will, I will just mention quickly, because I think it's germane to this conversation, is much for our information is, is for the public than for. As much for our information as for the public's information, and that is our role in what we are doing tonight and then what we do on a regular basis. Because we don't, we get a lot of information when we take our classes through the Municipal Association and other places. And one of the things that we need to remember, that under South Carolina Code, Section 629 760 says, "The municipal council is only involved in legislative functions of adopting a planning and zoning ordinance and/or amendments, approving mediated settlements of appeals from decisions of the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Board of Architectural Review, and/or the Planning Commission. The council does not administer the ordinances or hear appeals. The Planning Commission does not administer. Zoning is administered by the zoning administration or administrator and the Board of Zoning Appeals that also hears applications for variances and special exceptions. Appeals from the Board of Zoning Appeals go to circuit court. Local zoning ordinances may regulate property of all agencies and subdivisions of the state except for homes for the handicapped, which have a special exemption by state and federal laws." Our role in this is adopting legislatively the planning and zoning ordinances and then making amendments to that. So just as a note of our role and function in this, both for our edification and for the publics as well, too. Others?
Yeah, I only had one other thing. As I was reading and saw some of the homes, I guess like condominiums and the townhomes and things like that, and some of them were like having a 15-foot setback or something to that effect. I've noticed so many properties, the new properties, that some of them don't seem to even have almost enough room. I mean, if they had an extended truck, they, some of the driveways do not hardly hold that one car. So I'm just wondering if that 15-foot shouldn't be extended to, you know, a little bit further, like 20 for everything or something. But, you know, I went past this one house all the time, and I know I've seen others in other cities, too. That's what really brought my attention to it when I was seeing the ones in the other cities and then noticing this in one particular place that I drive by quite often, that driveway has no length at all. So with a house just having that 15-foot setback, and that's, you know, of course with the front entry driveway, so, yeah. I don't know if that.
Be something we can consider.
Of course, any of you or not?
It's, you know, garage size is something that we need to be aware of. My brother-in-law just bought a new vehicle that doesn't fit in his garage, and he's got a very large house, so.
Speaking about that and about the ordinance as whole, and we've heard things, we need historic neighborhoods, and we need to preserve this and we need to preserve that. And then you speak about driveway length, and we've heard affordable housing. That's always the, nobody really can define that, but I think there's some things that we need to remember. One, people live in Greer because they want to live in Greer. If they want a 15-foot driveway, that's, they're buying that. They're not going back and saying, "I'm not living here because we don't have this driveway." And we can add a regulation that says, "Yeah, you got to have a 20-foot driveway," but that's just more money. And when you say, "We've got to preserve these neighborhoods," okay, preserving is a lot more expensive than than people may understand it to be. More regulations generally mean more cost. But if you go back to some of the Mill neighborhoods, people still buy those homes today and more so owner-occupied than landlord, tenant, and most of those houses have no driveways. And so people do park on the streets. And I know what you're saying. You go to new neighborhoods, and one house is having, you know, get-together, and there's people parked out in the road. That's nothing new unless, and if we want to look at that, that's fine. I'm just saying that, for instance, the downtown neighborhood that everybody wants to refer to as historic because it was original, on Friday nights when there was a home football game, there was no parking on any of the roads because in that neighborhood, that's where everybody parked. There's no stadium on-site parking to speak of, and there was one lane of traffic. And you talk to people about that now, and yeah, we love that, you know, that was just the way it was. So I think that's kind of my frustration with this, is sometimes we're trying, it seems like we're trying to go one way, but then over here, we're going another.
Yeah, I guess you want to advance, but you want to stay the same.
Yeah, and that's kind of an impossibility, so. But anyway, I think this document, I think what we will have when we finish up will be what we need. Right now, I don't think we're there. I think there's more work that needs to be done. But I know this council, and I know it will be what we need when we're finished with it. Others?
Ms. Cott, I see a couple of responses added in response to some of the similar concerns that were shared. These were shared also in the, I believe, as part of the feedback in the public meetings that way. I see we increased minimum lot size, 10,000 square feet. That's within the transitional, is that right?
Traditional, suburban, sorry.
The suburban, okay. And then updated downtown transitional and downtown entryway overlays as well. Can you speak to what those, the specifics of those updates to those overlays?
There were several. It was retaining, not exempting, single-family and two-family homes, taking some of the stricter regulations on paint colors off. There were two or three others, I believe. They're the redlined versions in that overlay. But we did kind of take a fresh look at it based on a very long conversation with Mrs. Potter at the workshop and did propose some changes to that overlay.
Comments?
I had a quick question about, and I think I asked you this today when I called you about the project at West Arlington and North Mill are the one where we had the DRD that was suggested and it got voted down. And I remember the proposal on that particular site was to go with four units. I think we settled on three. And I think there was, you know, the argument at the time that it wasn't, it didn't really fit into the neighborhood, but yet you could look, you know, catty corner and one of the lots was 8,000 square feet, and across the street from there was 10,000 square feet. And, you know, there was a, there's a good bit of uniqueness, and I guess in that, I still hold that I don't have an issue with creating more density downtown and some opportunity with some of these lots. As an example, the one that's right across the street, you know, Jeff Howell's house, and he may hold on to that lot from now until, and it may never be developed. But, you know, I'd like to think that we could get more people to live in the downtown Greer that want to have access to all the great things that we've done here in the city with the park and with downtown and want to have the ability. Somebody mentioned tonight about walkability and doing some different things like that. I think that if we get more restrictive and require the lot sizes to be tremendous and, you know, you can only get one house there versus multiple houses, I think that's a real disservice. And I think that's something that we should be mindful of. And just, can you kind of speak to that area specifically in the zoning right now? Like, what does that look for? And if we did shift this more historical move, what would that look like?
Sure. The Davenport neighborhood is currently zoned R12. I'll be honest, most, we did a lot of research during the case that you mentioned, and most of the neighborhoods or the lots in that neighborhood are not 12,000 square feet or above. Staff does believe that honestly, that particular neighborhood should be zoned traditional. However, at the direction of our city attorney, we have a conversion chart. So everything zoned a specific way converts to a new zoning. So it's staff's opinion that this particular neighborhood should be traditional neighborhood with even smaller lot sizes, but that's not the way that it is currently zoned. So we have heard from this council that, and in our comprehensive plan, the adopted goal of increased density surrounding downtown. So we do feel like it is compatible with those goals.
Speaking to lot sizes and the comment, I heard, one of the comments heard tonight was about affordability. And I understand what people or the existing owners of homes in that particular neighborhood are concerned about is that maybe you've got a really big home, and it's, if you were able to subdivide the lot it was sitting on, you could put, you go vertical and you put really big homes on three different lots. And so therefore, you know, there's a, there's a dollar incentive to do that. And as the term affordable housing, let's just say that, is there anything in the document that helps with the cost of housing? I guess that's the best way. Because if somebody buys a home for a million bucks and wants to tear it down and build three homes, well, you know, those homes are going to be very expensive to begin with. But our Planning Commission, one of its approvals of a subdivision said, "Okay, these houses, based on the sizes, are going to sell for X. But what we would like for you to do as a developer is put in homes that are, instead of 2,500 square feet, they range between 1,500 or, you know, 1,500 to 1,700. So therefore, the entry price would be less than the 2,500-square-foot home." Or does this document have anything like that in there, say, for instance, in the areas that people want to consider historic? You know, I don't know. That's just a, it kind of popped in my head when Lee was asking that about lot sizes.
And I'm not certain this will fully answer your question, so Kelly, also hop into. I would say, one, the homes that are in the downtown transitional or the entryway corridor are subject to different building materials and higher standards than the rest of the city. We also do have options, kind of not in the core downtown, but more on the outskirts for cluster subdivision. If they are willing to protect more open space, they can get smaller lot sizes, but they also are going to be required to have higher-quality building materials. And then as far as missing middle or affordable housing, I believe allowing more housing types in the traditional neighborhood by right is addressing that piece. So again, I'm not quite sure.
No, I think what I'm asking is that, yes, if you were in an area that requires that you've got to build out of stone, and if you build a 3,000-square-foot building out of stone, it's going to be less expensive to build a 1,500-square-foot building out of stone. And so what I'm, instead of making it somewhat easy for a developer, whether it's in downtown neighborhood, a brand-new neighborhood, or lots that haven't been developed, that a builder or developer can come in and it's not so much of a price cap, it's a size, a square footage cap on so many homes, they still can make money on them, you know, their percentage, whatever, along with all the, what they planned on doing. So have we looked at anything like that?
Our cluster subdivision does also require a mix of housing types, which is sizes, like estate, and it does talk about different square footages of lots and homes. But otherwise, I don't, I don't believe so.
So it specifically talks about square footage of homes?
I believe it's just lots. And then we also have instituted lot coverage standards for most residential districts.
Okay. More discussion or questions at this point? Anybody want to weigh in?
I just want to say thank you to staff and our consultants for spending the time with me going through this individually, addressing my concerns. Is it a perfect document? Probably not. Is it better than what we had? Definitely. There are some concerns I still have concerning the history component, but I think you all did a good job at addressing a lot of my concerns, and I appreciate your time doing that. And it's refreshing that tonight we had two annexations happen, and their sole reason was because they believed in the city and just wanted to be a part of City of Greer. So I think that's going to continue to be the case, even with this new document moving
Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, this is the second part of our discussion this evening in regards to the Unified Development Ordinance and our current zoning ordinance. This is the first reading of ordinance number 32-2023. This is the ordinance to replace the city of Greer official zoning map with the new official zoning map, consistent with the city of Greer Unified Development Ordinance of even date here within. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Map's got too many similar colors on it.
Okay.
I thought so, too.
We can work on that.
It's really hard to decide.
It was hard to distinguish what color was what.
The one given out tonight, the colors were more distinguishable.
Okay.
We will work on that for you.
Duly noted.
In the airport environs zone, you know, that's delineated, but then we have our other zoning class, I mean, do we have that? This is just a general question, but do we have that? How does our control, how does our zoning, it can't trump the airport environs? So doesn't the airport environs dictate?
Yes.
What should be?
They do. So we do have base zoning, and again, most of the zoning in that area is manufacturing and logistics. Again, there are current properties that are zoned residential that, again, really shouldn't be, but we're doing a like-for-like conversion, so they'll stay that way. But current practice will not change any project or permit that comes in that is located in the airport overlay. We require a letter from the GSP Environs Commission before the city will sign off on the permit or project, and that will remain in place.
Further discussion?
Now, I had mentioned the suburban neighborhood. I kind of lost where we're at right now. Would this be a time to change any of that rezoning map or?
Yes. I will say that staff took a really hard look at that. Um, yes. Um, I will say that staff took a really hard look at that conversation. As I mentioned, we really feel like that specific neighborhood is not zoned appropriately to begin with. So we understand that them having suburban neighborhood doesn't make a lot of sense because it really should be traditional. But again, you have to look at all of the R-12 and R-15 properties in the city. And so they are all changing to one. So I'd say kind of 90, 95% of those, that term makes sense. And I will remind everyone that these terms come directly from the adopted comprehensive plan that have, um, corresponding kind of descriptions. And that is what we used to develop these new zoning districts. So staff is not supportive of making a change, but obviously, we are not the decision makers and will take consensus of council if that occurs.
Well, related to, you know, the, the map and the way it is, the suburban neighborhood, I guess I'm kind of with the lady that made the comment when she was observing. And, you know, that was where I got my thoughts from. And felt like, you know, in 2017, they were the hyster- hysterical, there it goes, historical. It has got to be kind of hysterical. Uh, historical, you know, neighborhood downtown. So I, I think probably with the ones that have lived there for so long, and probably even some of the younger people that move in, that will talk about moving, oh, I want to move to the downtown area, you know? So they kind of get that mindset right in that general vicinity off of points and everything, you know, so.
Well, and we need, you know, we need to be, we need to be clear as well, too, that the study that was commissioned by the city in regards to the establishment of a historic district was not part of our zoning or codes at that point, or, or never has been. So that designation has never been attached to that area. Others?
Um, I would respectfully request that if you are considering making an amendment, um, if you would just send kind of a very brief list to staff so that we might gather information that would help you in the decision-making process, um, and/or if we needed to consult the city attorney um, prior to making that amendment, that would be very helpful. But of course, we can discuss it second reading as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the first and final reading of Resolution Number 14. Thank you. Let's move to the final reading of Resolution 14-2023. This is a resolution approving and consenting to the transfer and partial assignment of WCGSP Lot 3 LLC to assumption by, uh, name of assigning to a certain, of a certain existing amended and restated economic development agreement to which the city is a party and other matters relating thereto. We have asked Mr. Reno Deaton to join us and sort this out for us, since I've probably butchered part of that in reading it this evening, but, um, welcome, sir. And, um, as, uh, as, as noted, uh, is the city's economic development director now. And so we, um, appreciate your insight in this, this evening and, uh, working with us on a, uh, on a closer basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Counsel, good evening. Uh, this matter pertains to the Clarius Park off Highway 80. Um, and a request like this has come before you before with other properties. Uh, when the original developer transacts the property, in this case, a building, to a new investor, oftentimes, a request to you is to let those negotiated incentives go with the building to the new, uh, investor. And that's this request here this evening. Uh, the new, uh, investor is Inland Port Greer Industrial. Uh, there are a couple of tenants in the building, Alta Beauty, that's their distribution operation, um, as well as Bonded Logistics. Mr. Jim Price is here this evening, the attorney for the project, uh, and Michael Zlark, the city's attorney, has reviewed and vetted this request as well.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of, uh, of, uh, discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive the first and final reading of Resolution 14-2023.
Same move.
Second. Floor is open for discussion. Reno, as a general question, and I ask this to the administrator, I understand the transferability of an economic agreement is of value to the original holder to, if he's going to sell that property. What is your opinion about having a, um, an expiration date of that transferability? Does that? Is that a wise thing? I mean, it, because at some point, I mean, we, I guess we are banking whatever uh, the, the economic incentive is until that happens. And what, you know, the what-if, if, if, if times go terrible and somebody calls that.
Certainly. So in, to a certain extent, the system bakes in an expiration. Uh, so the fee and load taxes agreement, for example, is negotiated to a term of years, 20 or 30 years in most cases. Any additional incentives that we offer on behalf of the city with respect to our economic development, development agreement also has a term of years baked into the agreement. And so really, I just see this as fulfilling our obligation. Uh, we negotiate on the front end to provide a certain incentive over a certain period of years. This doesn't change that in any way, just changes the name on the door. And Mr. Price, if, if any more comments are helpful, please chime in.
I can answer your question.
I agree with characterization addicts, what, uh, once, when we negotiate these deals, part of the negotiation. And so this one was for years. Others are ten years. Freeman was part of the inducement for the developer to do the question.
Well, it's not the, it's not the terms of the agreement, except for the transferability. The, I don't have an issue with the 10 years, 20 or 30. It's, it's, we have, uh, we have a, an owner who holds this agreement, and you may, maybe they, they have the building or I, I, well, let me back up. The agreement doesn't go, that, that, that generally what we're talking about doesn't go into effect until the building is erect and employees are there. Is that correct?
When the building becomes in service.
Yes. Okay. All right.
Very good.
I don't have any further questions.
Sure, thank you.
Others? Comments? Questions? Discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, item eight before us this evening is the 2024 Greer City Council meeting schedule. Uh, this is, uh, typically presented by Ms. Duncan without comment because she doesn't want to answer questions about it, so. It is what it is, and if you don't like it, you need to talk to her about it. It is contained in your packet this evening, and, uh, she will be glad to help us with that if, uh, you have any question in regards to the 2024 Greer City Council meeting schedule. We will have to approve that, uh, so I will entertain a motion to receive.
Same move.
Second. And a second. Any questions of Ms. Duncan in regards to the 2024 Greer City Council meeting schedule? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, the last item of regular business we have this evening is the, uh, a report, uh, in regards to the Greer general election results from November 7th, 2023. This is for information only that comes to us from, uh, Ms. Duncan in regards to our elections and some additional information, uh, as well, too. So the floor is yours.
I, I added the minutes this year because we were audited by the state. The state of South Carolina randomly chooses districts to audit, and within that district, precincts. And the City of Greer, in the Greenville County District, was audited, and, um, there were no issues. The hand count and the electronic count were the same. I just wanted you to be aware that that did happen. I'm not aware that it's happened before. So I thought that was, was interesting, and I wanted you to be aware that we were audited.
I think it would be appropriate as well, too, to, uh, to note that, uh, Ms. Duncan has, um, conducted our, um, elections for a number of years at this point, and, uh, we want to thank her and, uh, those that, uh, serve as our election commission as well, too, for the work that they put in and, uh, and, um, particularly as, uh, as we have local elections and then general elections, too, while they are run by the county. Uh, nevertheless, it requires, uh, extra time and attention by our staff and, uh, members of our, uh, commission. And, uh, so we just want to tip our hats to, to those folks. With that, then, we have two contractual matters that we need to consider in executive session. Uh, I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss two contractual matters, one pertaining to project lineout, the other, project Titus, that's allowed by state statute, section 30-470A2.
Comes as a recommendation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we will stay here for our executive session and, um, dismiss, uh, the public. Thank y'all for joining us this evening. All right, counsel, in executive session, we have, uh, considered one matter which we will, uh, deal with as we come back into regular session and, uh, acquired information, um, without action in regards to the other. Both of those, um, uh, were allowed by state statute. I'll entertain a motion that we come out of executive session.
Same move.
And a second. And we've got a second. Ms. Duncan?
I didn't hear the second.
Uh, Ms. Albert had the second.
Mr. Earwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, based on information that we acquired in executive session, let's return to first reading of ordinance number 30-2023. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the City of Greer, South Carolina, and project lineout with respect to certain reimbursements to be made for certain investments made in the city, authorizing the execution and delivery of additional documents and taking additional actions, providing for other related matters. I'll entertain a motion, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Same move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments?
I guess we're just going to have to depend on our city administrator to be hard-nosed about what these look like.
Without a-
Without an elevation or without a, some kind of explanation.
Without, without a more defined site plan, I, I can't support it.
Without a what?
Without a more defined site plan.
I understand. Said mortified.
Yeah, I'm mortified. Well, and this, there'll be two readings on this or one? Two. Two. This is an ordinance.
Maybe we could get that before next reading. If our hard-nosed city administrator would, and his hard-nosed helper.
I think the message is clear. Others?
Can say that don't cut it.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Earwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no further stated business. Stand adjourned.